Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Mayor.
Thank you for coming. Today is Tuesday, March 2nd, and this is the regular meeting of the Nashville Town Council. And for the record, the time is now seven o'clock. We have a number of things to do this evening, and we'll move quickly. First item, of course, is approval of the minutes, of which we have two, Tuesday, February 5th, and Wednesday, February 20th. One's a regular meeting, one's a call meeting. Does the Chair here motion the minutes be approved? Is there written or are there corrections?
So moved.
It's been moved, and seconded, the minutes will be approved. Any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate silver saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. If the minutes are approved, it's a sign of the gavel. We didn't have anyone to sign up for public comment, so we'll move on to our issues. The first item is the presentation of a service weapon to our retired Police Chief Tom Bouchore. And I've got a whole bunch of stuff here for him, Tom. If you'll come on up here, bring anybody you want to bring with you, councilmen, if you ever want to come with me and get a picture.
We'll get you and Tom. Get you and Tom head to center.
You did the best job you ever had, called retired.
Hours were tough.
Yeah. Job was good and vague, but hours were great. I've been personally retired now for nineteen years. Best job I've ever had. At the beginning of January, we approved a resolution for your participation, which I'll pass on to you, so that's all been included in the minutes. We have for you also a letter of sincere wishes from Senator Tom Phillips. Which says, Dear Chief Bouchore, I wish to extend my sincerest congratulations to you on your retirement. Since me and I are pleased to join your family and friends, I recognize that you're twenty-one years of service in law enforcement. I'm proud of our birthed splendors of brave to put their lives at risk on a daily basis to protect our communities. Your distinguished career has reflected the highest standard of integrity and leadership, and I thank you for your valiant and selfless service of our citizens. I would also like to thank you, like to recognize you for your dedication and hard work at Pioneer to help the mission. Congratulations. We wish you all the best, Tom Phillips. Can you rephrase that? You know, a while back, I swore this lad in right here, and gave him a badge. Now he don't have the badge, so now I'm gonna give him a gun. But there are no guns.
Oh, good.
You've got all the requirements for the training for your retired weapon.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Our second item is a presentation of an audit. Leonard, you want to take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I want to introduce our interim Finance Director, Melanie Bryan. She's gonna make an introduction or two, and lead us into the discussion on the audit.
Good evening. Before we actually get into the presentation of the audit, I do want to make an introduction. We have Russell Langley with us tonight, sitting at the front table. Russell is the Assistant Finance Director for the town right now, in training with me to eventually take over the role as your Finance Officer, and move forward with a permanent person. He's been with us a week. I will say, he's asking good questions, and he's taking notes, and he's listening, so I think we're off to a good start. And I think it's fitting that he's here tonight to hear the report of your financials for the fiscal year that ended on June 30th. We have with us tonight Dale Place, with your audit firm, May and Place, to present the audit. You all should have the reports in front of you, that are bound, have been submitted to the Local Government Commission, and accepted with no changes by the Local Government Commission. Dale?
Thank you, Melanie. And thank you, council, for having me here tonight. You have, should have a copy of the audit report in front of you, as usual, or each year it seems to be getting longer and longer. This year it's eighty-eight pages long. So before I came, I tried to decide how was it gonna present eighty-eight pages. And I think probably the best way to do it, if you'll turn to page two, and let me go through the table of contents, and then I'll draw your attention to a few items, and then answer any questions you may have. And you see in the table of contents, you've got the financial section, and first you have the independent auditor's report, which you had a clean report, unmodified, or what was known as unqualified opinion in the past, which is the best you can get. Then the next section is your management's discussion and analysis, and that is a narrative that management here writes describing the financial activities during the year, based on the numbers we audit. Then under it's your government-wide financial statements, and these are the financial statements that include your long-term debt and your capital assets. And under it is the fund financial statements, which do not include your long-term debt and capital assets. And then following it, you have the required supplemental financial data, and then following that, the individual fund statements and schedules, and those are the budget actual-type schedules that you probably see each month here at the board meetings. Following it is you've got your other schedules, where it talks about your taxes receivable, and your compliance section, which is where we look at compliance with different type of things. You had one finding, but what happened was, there was some over expenditure in a couple line items. But what usually happens is, during the last, the month of June, amendments are made to the budget, so that doesn't happen. Well, you didn't have a Finance Officer during that time period. So that's only, I mean, it's nothing to be concerned about. That's the only reason why it happened. So if you would, turn to page twenty-four. And this is your general fund and your Capital Reserve Fund, and it's your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And if you look down, almost near the bottom, you see you had an increase of sixty-five thousand on your general fund, and Capital Reserve Fund of two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, which came from the general fund. It was a transfer. Gave you a total of three-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-dollar increase in your own fund balance. And if you turn to page twenty-two, this is your balance sheet of those two same funds, and look down near the bottom, and you see you have unassigned fund balance in the general fund of four-point-two-million, for total governmental funds of four-point-two-million. In essence, that's your savings account. That's what's been, that's undesignedated, unrestricted, that you can spend on whatever the town needs to spend it on. Now, if you turn to page twenty-eight, here's a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund position, net position, for our proprietary funds, which is your water and sewer fund. And you had an increase of one-point-six-million dollars this year. So they increased your fund balance by one-point-six-million dollars. And if you turn to the page right before, twenty-seven, down near the bottom, you'll see there unrestricted, a two-point-two-million in net position. So there again, that's like your savings account. That's the unrestricted money you have. But overall, everything looked to be in good shape, especially considering you had part-time finance officers and part-time town managers during these time periods. So now I'd be glad to ask any questions you may have.
You want to have your questions? We'll see if we can read this, and call you later, give me.
Excuse me, sir.
I said, we can read this and call you later.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Feel free to call me. Like I said, there's so much information, it's hard to disseminate it and people comprehend it. So, but, you know, if you want to go back and look at it, and then you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. And also I have with me is amended contract. Local Government Commission requires amended contract when its audit is presented after October 31st. So at this meeting, I don't know if this is something I should bring up, or something one of you should bring up. It needs to be approved, so you can sign it, and we can get it into the Local Government Commission.
Give that to Larry.
Dale, I have a question. Page twenty-two, the unassigned balance, four-point-two-nine-four.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's liquid.
Yes, ma'am. If you look up top, you'll see you have four-point-five-million in cash, that's cash and investments. That two, that four-point-two-million is part of that four-point-five-million in cash.
Okay, and that was of June 30?
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions?
I would just say, on his, the contract amendment, it doesn't change the amount that you paid for his work. It just allows him to submit his final bill after the LGC's deadline, so that we can pay his final payment. We will have an electronic copy of this, that we can post out on the town's website after you guys act tonight and accept this report for the record. Then we'll post up the financials, so that they're out there for the community.
Mayor, member of the council, I would, I mean, I've looked at it, and she's exactly right. The only thing that's changed is the date of the contract. I'd recommend approval as part of this discussion.
Okay. Chair here motion, we approve this amended contract.
So may. Second.
And move to second, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate silver saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. It is approved. We just signed it tonight.
And you accept the report, so I can post it on the web.
Yep. All done. Okay. Next item, C. A consideration of street and special events permit application for the forty-third Nashville Blooming Festival. We had a public hearing on that last Wednesday night, and no one had anything to say about it, so I guess everything's on go. The Chair here motion, approve this consideration.
So may.
Second.
And move to second, is any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate silver saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. According to your own. Okay. No. Thank you. Item D is consideration that of a street and special events permit application for the Sudan Shrine or ceremonial parade, which is supposed to happen in May. We had a public hearing on this last Wednesday night, and there was no problems with it. Does Chair here motion approve this consideration?
So may. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approve the consideration, any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate silver saying yes.
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 Yes, yes. Yes, okay. Opposed, no. I think we got it.
Mayor.
Yes.
Didn't I overhear some conversation last week, that the map they submitted is not the actual route that they're gonna take?
The map that they submitted last week, said they will follow the same route as the Blooming Festival.
Right, okay.
Yet the actual map they had, had a red line coming straight down Washington Street.
So which one are we gonna do?
They told me they were coming straight down Washington Street.
Okay, alright, okay.
So that's...
So they would not, they would not come down Church Street?
No, no, that's their plan.
Alright.
Okay, item E is consideration of the street and special events permit application for the Church on the Rise color run. Again, we had a public hearing on that last Wednesday night, and there was no consideration, no problems with it. Does Chair here motion approve the consideration?
So may.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate silver saying yes.
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 Opposed, no. Okay. Item F is consideration of appointment of Ekaterina Belaev Sykes to the Library Advisory Board. Does Chair here motion approve this consideration?
So may.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate silver saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay, congratulations, Ekaterina. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, that's...
Stand up, let everybody see you.
The lady right over there.
New on the library board. Thank you for being with us. Okay, and item G is consideration of a CGI communication partnership. Julie, do you have some words for this, as to what we have to hear?
Yes, sir. Can I hear you? Is it on?
I can't hear you.
Okay, well, I don't know if I can hear you.
I don't think you're on at all.
I don't know. You want me to go over there?
Yep, please do.
Alright, how about now?
Much better.
Okay, so, good evening. And so CGI, you received information on this a couple of weeks ago, and we have not made an official decision, and I'd like to get back in touch with CGI to let them know whether we want to do the showcase video program or not, so that we can get on the production schedule, if we would like to have them do the showcase video program. What it is, is CGI partners with the National League of Cities and the United States Council of Mayors, and what they do is, they offer to different cities and towns across the United States, they showcase videos, and they do the production of the video, they do the voice-overs, they do the music, and they do the scripting. So all we have to do is provide the events, the townspeople, and what we would like them to video and showcase for our community. So we will have a welcome video, and then we get three videos of our choosing. One could be the Blooming Festival, which is coming up in May. We've just approved this special, special event application for that. So if we want to get that showcased as one of the things that Nashville has to offer for community tourism and economic development, we would need to get in their production line very quickly. So I'm asking for a decision tonight on whether or not you'd like this series of videos done for free through these partnerships for the town, and that we can host on our website. The videos will be, the welcome video will be placed on our homepage, the other videos will be placed throughout the website, and the pages that are most relevant, the economic development sites, are what Nashville has to offer site, you know, what's coming up. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. You were given some information a couple of weeks ago, so that you could go look at the towns that had examples, so you could see how they do high-quality footage with the drones, and the quality of voice-overs, the music, and then typing of, the types of scripts that they'll do in these anywhere between thirty seconds to two-minute videos. So do you have any questions tonight?
Any questions?
Did you mention the obligation, the town's obligation?
There is an obligation with this, that we do, one, that we do post it on the website for three years, on our homepage. And then there is an obligation that we sign a letter of support, that will go out to local businesses. The letter of support just says that we are partnering with CGI communities, so that when they solicit other businesses, that they know that it's not a spam or a fraud, it is something that we have checked out, and we are doing as the town. And then, as part of that campaign, even if there are no businesses that sign up for the advertisement or videos, they still give us the four videos free. So we still have that, that option for the videos, but they do offer to the different businesses in town, the same videos and advertising spots for their own businesses, so they can be showcased along with the town.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, in looking at it, do you see any negatives for the town?
I do not.
All positives.
I believe it is all positive, and I have enjoyed the videos they've done for other towns. They are well-done videos, and I think that would be something that will really help showcase the town, and some of the, if we pick the industrial park, for instance, where we're trying to fill that building up, that will help with our economic development and marketing for that site.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, did CGI contact us, or did we contact them?
CGI contacted us. They picked us to be one of their communities. They thought that we had something to offer, so they chose us.
Okay. They are out of Rochester, New York?
Yes, they are.
Is there a similar communications outfit in North Carolina?
I do not believe so. I have not found one, and since they do partner with the National League, and with the United States Association of Mayors, since they do do the entire United States, most of the videos that are done in North Carolina have been done by CGI.
Are they endorsed by the League of Municipalities?
Yes, they are.
As far as the timeframe for this, I know we've discussed, when we do get a permanent manager, that if they do any filming before that, that they would come back and...
They will redo the video.
Redo the video.
At no cost.
Also, I know, we're also looking at the Main Street and Rural Planning application that we had made. I would love to get some feedback from them, as far as what we should be doing in this type of video. What is the timeframe? I know we want the Blooming Festival, which is coming up in a couple of months. Can we push everything off until after that?
Yes, yes, we can. We have the ability to set the timeframe, but since the Blooming Festival is coming up quickly, and they are already starting their production time, project management timelines, and we do want to get that in there as soon as possible, if we do want them to do the Blooming Festival. We can push it off a year, however, the sooner we have the videos, the more advertising we're getting for the town, and the better that event will be.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, further comments? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consideration.
So may. Second.
And second. Any discussion? Further discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate silver saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. All done. Okay, item H is a consideration of budget amendment number twenty-seven, which is sort of an innocuous thing. We're actually receiving money to recognize the receipt of insurance proceeds for the damaged bay door at the fire department, and creates funding in the public buildings budget to pay for repair by forty-eight-hundred and four dollars, which you can see, it's just increased the maintenance and repairs item by that amount of money. Does Chair here motion approve this budget amendment?
So may.
Okay.
Second.
But moved and seconded, approve the amendments, any discussion?
What, what kind of, this is the first I've heard about damage to the bay door. What happened?
They backed into one of the doors over there, and pushed it out. I think it was a second door.
They backed into it?
Chief, chief, could you tell us that?
Did they not know it was down?
Something, something happened to it. It got bulged out.
It was a mechanical failure in the door. They were going out to a call, and the door released and come down on top of the fire truck, and the truck couldn't stop. It tore the door out. So it was a mechanical failure in the door.
How much damage did it do to the fire truck?
Tore a ladder up on the truck, and a side railing on the truck. That was the two thousand and seven pierce.
Wasn't that a new one?
No, it wasn't a new one. So, that's been replaced, too. That's been taken care of, too.
Okay, that's been taken care of.
The door has been fixed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other comments? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate silver saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. It is done. Okay, Mr. Manager, your report, sir.
Mayor, member, members of council, I have three budget amendments that occurred under my authority, that I need to report to you all. We moved two-thousand dollars from part-time salaries over into maintenance and repairs to assist with the cleaning of the carpet cleaning project that we did. So it increased the maintenance and repairs in buildings, laying out about two-thousand dollars. The second one is within recreation. We moved fifteen-hundred dollars from the purchase for concessions into equipment rental. That was for the, to cover the cost of the movie rental and the portable toilets at Stony Creek. Third, we moved from capital outlay, when they purchased the police cars, we were short thirty-six-hundred-and-ten dollars, and under capital outlay equipment, we needed to have it all in the same line item. So we moved a similar amount, thirty-six-hundred-and-ten dollars, from capital outlay of other equipment, to capital outlay for equipment for the police department, to purchase those trucks. I have put before you all a letter that Julie received, I think Friday, and sent it to me. I was actually at home. I didn't purely understand it when, well, I had to send her an email back and said, are they just recognizing our application, or are they really, truly selecting us? And the latter is true. You have the letter before you, on your, at the special meeting on February 20th, they'd only given us about a week to make an application, to be involved with the Downtown Strong Initiative, which we all believed was a worthy thing to do. They indicated that they would select twenty or thirty communities across the state to, wherein they would provide substantial assistance to us, various activities in downtown. With your approval on the 20th, Julie met the deadline on Monday, the 25th, and on Friday, the March 1st, we got the letter saying we are in. So we're pretty excited about this, and there's a memorandum of understanding coming forth. We'll get that approved, and, you know, let you all know what it is they're gonna do, and we'll get started. And if I may be permitted, I'm gonna ask Russell Langley to come to the mic. While he's getting there, my purpose in this is, he's gonna be there sooner or later, so it might as well be sooner, and I'll ask Russell just to tell you a bit about himself.
So I'm from Nashville, born and raised. Excited to be back. I went to school at Campbell University, after attending high school in Nash Central, and after college, I, my first position was with the Department of Revenue, the North Carolina Department of Revenue, and I'm excited to be back in Nashville to serve the local community.
Glad to have you with us.
Yep, thank you.
Looking forward to a long and distinguished career.
Yep.
And I do apologize, this Melanie, but he's been here two weeks. You were having too much fun.
He's almost a veteran now.
We're certainly glad, we're certainly glad to have Russell here, and we expect great things to come from him. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, move on to council comments. Before we get there, I guess everyone's noticed the work going on down on Cross Street. After twenty, twenty or more years of discussion, we finally got that thing underway, and they're moving along with it very quickly, but they've had to go slower than anticipated because of the water. And they have to work a little, let it dry a little, work a little more, let it dry a little. But it looks like they're gonna, they're gonna pull the thing off, so it's gonna be a very nice corner when they get the thing fixed. Okay, Mr. Taylor?
I, I too would like to welcome Russell for coming in here. And when Melanie said he'd been here one week, I didn't know if I was having a senior moment or not, because I thought he'd been here two weeks, but, but I drop a week every now and then. Welcome home, Russell. And like the mayor said, I hope you have a long career here in Nashville, in that job. So we don't want you bouncing away from us too quick now. Once again, I'd like to also thank the, our Finance Department, and without them, we couldn't have gotten the report that we've got before us tonight, so hopefully we can keep, keep out of harm's way with Russell and the assistance that we've gotten from the interim people that we've had in here. And I want to thank all of you for the job, job well done. Thank you, Mr. May, for the report. I'm almost, I want to let the council know that I'll be out of town Sunday, from this coming Sunday to next Sunday, but if anything comes up where you do need to get in contact with, I do have my cell phone with me, so.
Okay.
But thank you, that's it.
You will be in the United States?
So what?
You will be in the United States?
I'll be in Georgia, I'll tell you.
Okay. My phone doesn't work outside the US, that's the only reason I'm there.
I'll be in Georgia.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to start out by recognizing Tom Bouchore and the job he did for the town of Nashville while he was working here, and wishing the very best in his retirement, or whatever his plans are, being retired. Also, it gives me great pleasure in seeing Russell Langley sitting at that table over there, seeing a young man who was a Nashville native, who went to school here, and who had a desire to come back and work in this town, in a community he knows and loves. And I welcome you, Russell, being here. Also, Julie Spriggs, what can I say? I watched her in action the other night. I watched her in action the other night. We got a good one. She is on the ball. She knows what's going on. When she presents something, she's got all the facts and things in her mind when she sits down with you. So it'll be hard to stump her with a question. Thank you, Julie, for the job you're doing. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor?
Welcome, Russell. Keep us solvent. That's important. Last Friday, Read Across a Miracle was kicked off at our local gymnasium. Marguerite Bishop and Mr. Mangan, the principal, and Kate, the fire department, the police department, were all in support of this. And the book they selected is The Toothpaste Millionaire. It's a book about entrepreneurship. It's about ingenuity, resourcefulness, but above all, it's about friendship. It's a really good book, and they want us all to read this and to be able to talk to students about it in the next, in the weeks to come, right? Anyway, I thank you, Marguerite, and I thank you, our wonderful librarian, for helping us with this.
Sure, thank you. Kate?
I just wanted to say thank you to Tom for all of your years of service and dedication, and I wish you all the best. I wanted to welcome Russell as well. I think it's wonderful, being from Nashville, coming back to Nashville. We're excited to have you. And I want to say thank you to Ekaterina for your commitment to the library, and we're excited to have you on board. That's it?
That's it, okay. Okay, thank you very much. And I'd like to reiterate the thanks to Tom. Tom did a good job with us all the time he was here. Russell, we're looking forward to a great career with you. Sometime we'll together change, exchange hair secrets with you. And Ekaterina, thank you for being with us. Appreciate all you do for us. And everybody else, thank you for coming and being part of our town. We appreciate you coming, and bring your friends next time. I hope sometime we have to build a bigger building to take everybody. Okay, thanks a whole lot. Okay, at this time, the Chair will consider a motion to adjourn.
So may.
Second.
It's been moved, and second, we adjourn. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? We are adjourned.